Well, I think we can resume our city council which is called, which was called to order two hours ago. We already had our roll call and we need a report of our closed session.
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council has been in closed session on the personnel matter identified as item C on the agenda. There's no final action to report at this time on that matter. It is being continued to the next meeting for further deliberation and final action. And if the clerk could give us the date for that meeting?
October 8th.
Okay. So, we want to confirm that the council members are all available on October 8th? Yeah, I know. This is the correct. And on October 8th, we will continue that hearing. We can pick the time to meet your schedule. We could do that at...
Six o'clock?
At six o'clock, if that's your pleasure.
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody can make it at six at the next city council, October. Okay, so that'll, that'll be good.
So, that item is continued to October 8th at 6:00 PM and ask the clerk to give notice to the interested parties on that.
Okay, our next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Daly. Please rise. Are there any added or deleted items?
No, sir.
Okay. Time for public comment. I have one request from Mark Cloud. Please come forward and tell us about SCE wildfire update.
Good evening, I'm Mark Cloud, here with the City Council. I'm Mark Cloud, we're going to the Ferris route through Southern California, Edison. And I'm here tonight to tell you about two things. First, one, your 2018 reliability report is now available. If you'd like to see, if you'd like to see how reliable we are as a company in your city regarding electricity, that's available not only on our website, but also submitted that information to your clerk and city staff. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of is, and this is perhaps even more significant given the wildfire threat we face in the state, I have submitted to your clerk and city staff an overview, a brief overview of what the company is doing to mitigate wildfire risk in our service territory. Of course, that includes Loma Linda. We're doing several things that are really important, and if you'd like more information on those things, we've made it available not only on our website, but in that packet I've provided to the clerk. Namely, we're doing things like vegetation management, which we've always done, but we're doing, doing it more so now. And so, we are making sure that we're doing everything we can from a vegetation standpoint to ensure that our infrastructure is at the lowest risk possible for being, contributing to or being involved with wildfire as it relates to vegetation. We're also doing overhead inspections with helicopters. And this is something that's actually been impacting folks in this area over the last several weeks because they, a lot of these overhead inspections have been happening right here in this area, Redlands, Highland, Grand Terrace, Colton, and of course, Loma Linda. And, and folks who don't know what it is, which is most everybody, it can be alarming for them. So, if you hear anything about our helicopters flying overhead, they're white, yellow, and green. They're hovering for a while, they're doing overhead inspections to ensure our infrastructure is in good repair. And when it's not, we are making those repairs. We also did this on the ground, and we've been working with our cities, thank you, Jar, for being, working with us with our aggressive permitting requests this year as a result of the wildfire risk. We are taking in a lot of new information. We're collecting more data now in this area than the National Weather Service. We have data collection sensors on many of our poles, hundreds and hundreds of them through our service territory. We've also got lots of high-def cameras now perched above our service territory. We're making that visual data accessible to folks like, you know, your local fire agencies, and they're finding that information very helpful as they fight their own fires. And we're also doing something called...
Public Safety Power Shutoffs, which is, we shorten that to, the acronym there is PSPS. This is something that's a little more controversial, and it's been in the papers, if you haven't read about it. Basically, it's where we, and we're not the only ones doing this, SDGNE, PGNE, the other privately, or investor-owned utilities are also doing this. It's where we are in real-time making really critical decisions about when and where to de-energize circuits on our grid. And that's only being done in the most extreme cases where it seems like, based on all the evidence we're collecting in real-time, including all that weather data, working with all of our partners, including Cal Fire and elsewhere, we're, we're making decisions to de-energize circuits when and where it makes sense, and only in cases where we believe, based on all the evidence, that a fire might take down a neighborhood or a circuit. And so, we are taking that very, very seriously, and we are only doing that in extreme cases. So, most of this work, including the PSPS notifications, if you get them, they're likely only happening in the high-fire-risk areas, so the mountains and the foothills. The more urban areas of our service territory, large parts of the Inland Empire, likely won't see an actual de-energization from a PSPS protocol. So, those are the things that we're working on. We're taking the fire threat really, really seriously at Edison. And if you'd like more information, I can come back and give you more thorough presentation. That information's also in your clerk's possession. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thanks for giving me this time to give these public comments.
I would like to comment that Edison has been doing a lot of tree trimming underneath the power lines, so we like that. So, if you want to do some more, let me know. I will give you a couple more trees to trim.
Absolutely. We're actually offering to private landowners, if our, if your trees on your property are getting eerily close to our power lines, we'll cut them down for you or take the trees out for you. And so, we're, we're striking those individual agreements with local residents, so that's also available.
Go ahead. I know for a matter of months, you have, SCE has been working on upgrading a major easement that you have through our city. And I've seen the helicopters, and I've seen the trucks, and can you give us an update on just where that project is and ultimately where it's headed?
Sure.
And what's the termination date?
Yeah, so that's our West of Devers project. That is a major transmission line upgrade project that begins in the west of, I'm sorry, the Devers substation in the Palm Springs area, and terminates in this area at some of the substations here, including the San Bernardino Substation and San Bernardino. Basically, it's being built to accommodate what will likely end up being an influx of renewable energy coming out of the desert, i.e. wind and solar, and being able to feed or take that renewable power and deliver it here in the Inland Empire. That's what that project's about. It's like a four-year construction project, so we are in the first year still of a four-year project. The work will resume, I'll say this, we have four segments throughout, from Palm Springs into this area. And that, the work, the construction work, which is being conducted by a very good transmission line company called Barnard Construction, we've been working very closely with Jar and his staff to ensure that we're doing everything we need to do from a company standpoint, from a construction standpoint, that we're, we're doing everything to respect the city as, that we need to do. They are bouncing around the segments between now and the other project. So, while we've done work in Loma Linda and this area over the last several months, we've vacated the area. By and large, we're coming back in the first quarter of 2019 to do more work, to resume the work. And again, this is a four-year project, and it's, the whole goal is to beef up our transmission system to ensure that more renewables are able to come onto the system.
So, ultimately, the objective of that project is...
To ensure...
More power to our area?
To more power and more renewable power, yeah. Our mandate is...
And the renewable comes from Palm Springs?
The desert area in general will be fed into the Devers Substation out in the Palm Springs area, which is just east of, or west of Palm Springs.
And the expected completion date of this whole project is?
Well, it's a four-year project, so if it started in, I'm sorry?
You started in 18.
That's right, 18. So, 21?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Oh.
Yeah.
My reelection year, okay.
So, what I'm doing right now, what we're doing right now is work with, with Mark's team on, we're gonna be asking him to work with our landscaper guy to start fixing the irrigation because the equipment had been broken, our irrigation system, so we're gonna go back, work with their subcontractor to fix our irrigation and do some tree trimming along there.
And, and are you, I've watched the helicopters hover and so forth. Are you changing the towers out? Is that what's happening there?
Yes, towers are being replaced. They're being slightly repositioned in some areas, they're being, they're being upgraded, if you will, to handle more capacity.
Okay.
The lines are actually getting thicker because they're handling more capacity.
But, but the tower itself is single-story as opposed to kind of a multi-structure, multi-iron structure? Is that right?
You mean like a lattice tower?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, in this area, particularly in the areas that are more urban, you'll see fewer lattice towers in projects like this and more what we call tubular steel poles.
Okay, okay. And, and then, but the easement, the city is still responsible for the landscaping and easement below those towers?
But, but right now, right now, we kind of stay away from it, where we have a sidewalk closed for people to walk across the easement.
Because it's looking pretty bad underneath those.
Right, right, that's why, that's why I just talked to Mark that we could be start working on it, because I can't, I can't wait until the first quarter of 2020 to start get some relegation, so we'll be working on it.
Okay, because those used to be beautiful park areas and so forth, and now they're downright ugly.
Right, because we stopped working on it when they worked on it.
Okay, that makes sense.
I should note, Barnard Construction is a company out of Montana that's managing this project for us, they're doing the actual construction. They are very good at what they do, they're very well-respected in the industry, and they're incredibly responsive. So, if you ever need anyone to come out, I can grab somebody from the company to give you a more detailed overview, exactly what's happening on the ground. They've been great to work with, and I'd be happy to make that available to you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your report.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? No takers. Okay, then we'll go on to council bill, item number one, Council Bill R-2019-35, Census.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, we have a resolution that we'd like to, the city council to approve. In the meantime, I would like to ask Lupe Camacho to come out, give us a status on the Census Report for the 2020.
Thank you very much, Jarb, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and residents and staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to do a little bit of a update of what we've been doing at the Census Bureau. We have started one of our first operations, and that is the address canvassing. Address canvassing is basically just matching buildings to addresses and making sure that the building is still existing, and if it is existing, that it has an address attached to it. So, the address canvassing operation has begun, and I will be forwarding to Jarb and as well, Alexa, I believe is, is my contact, the videos, both in English and in Spanish, that we have available on our website of census.gov, so that people are informed of the format that we're doing, how it's being conducted, what to look for, to make sure that we don't have any fraudulent use of the census information or the census approach. Because our address canvassers do walk up to the actual residences and knock at the door and make sure that the building matches the address. You know, not all buildings have numbers on them, so that's part of what we do to make sure we verify those addresses. We have had some complaints so far already. We just started in August, at the beginning of this last month, and we've already had some complaints regarding some individuals trying to utilize that operation to request information like people's social security numbers, credit cards, things of that nature. And we want to make sure your community is aware that none of that is part of the census. We do not reach out to them other than to ask, is that building that address? And that's it, that's all we ask for. In, in our operations, as we conduct them, as we go along, we will be doing regular updates to your board to make sure that your community is aware. And of course, we'll be working with Jarb and his staff to make sure that we provide you with the next phases of operation as they start rolling out, because a lot of this stuff is going to be a little bit tricky for the community to understand, and we want to make sure that they are informed before anything else happens. I believe your PD was also informed of the address canvassing as of August 4th, and they should have received something at roll call, we were told, a video that they viewed and that they actually were able to see what a census taker should look like, the badge that they wear, the gear that they carry, the computer that they have with them, asking the questions about the address. So, that's our update for now. And just to give you a little brief update about the communities around you, the, all of the communities around you, with the exception of City of San Bernardino, it's the only one we're waiting for, and we'll see how things go, but all of their cities are opening their complete count committees, and we're getting them rolling, and we're getting them involved, and they are recruiting their volunteers, so we should have a really nice push to get people educated and informed about the census. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to...
Of course. Go ahead. So, I'm a citizen of Loma Linda that lives not far from here. I don't recall seeing any communication yet regarding the census. I've read a number of articles, kind of on a national level, about how it boosts employment and all kinds of stuff that, that benefit the federal government. But as a citizen and a homeowner in Loma Linda, when am I going to hear about this, and what's the nature of the message?
The nature of the message, let me start with that. The nature of the message, first of all, is that, of course, the census count migrates and is involved in everything that we do, everything, all of the services and...
Right.
All of the community money that comes through.
It's important, yeah.
And of course, portionment of, of like, of congressional seats. So, we already know that. But the way that we're going to roll out this message is through your complete count committee. And in working with your...
With what?
With your complete count committee.
Okay.
So, your complete count committee will allow us to work with you, partner up with you, bring together trusted messengers of your community, both from your faith-based community and non-faith-based community.
Yeah.
We're also reaching out to your Unified School District, so we will be bringing those representatives onboard to your committee. And the committee itself will begin to inform the council of the progress of dissemination of the information. So, I know Loma Linda was dark for, I think, one month, and so it kind of put things on a little bit of a standstill, but we are working towards making sure that that information does get out to the community, and your complete count committee will be the instrument by which that information gets out to your community.
Okay, so I want to drill that down a little bit. When you say you're going to keep in touch with the council and school districts and so forth, that's good. Is the mayor going to show up on my doorstep one Sunday morning with a clipboard? Or how am I going to know when this is happening?
Exactly. There's a packet of information that I brought today. A lot of the information, as we first got started, was not available because decisions hadn't been made about the sequencing of events. Now it's available, so I brought you a packet of information, which your city clerk will distribute to you guys.
Okay.
And in that packet, you will see a flyer that is our main integral flyer of how we're going to invite the communities to respond. And it has an entire schedule, beginning with the middle of March, all the way through the end of April, and it will be a sequence of, as I mentioned before, a sequence of letter, postcard, letter, postcard, and ultimately, of course, paper, paper questionnaires for those that are not comfortable with the website or the phone.
Okay.
Okay? And, and again, we will make those available as well, so that you can put them on your website, on all of your media pages, Facebook, Instagram, we have all that capability. We were just waiting for this resolution to be accepted and approved by the council so that we can move forward with the partnering portion of it, which is where we begin to bring everything to your community.
And what is your district? Just Loma Linda, or do you go beyond Loma Linda, I'm assuming?
Oh, I handle the entire San Bernardino County.
Wow.
So, yeah.
How many people do you have helping you with this?
I've got three additional partnership specialists.
You've got a lot of territory.
I do, and we're still bringing more people onboard. I was just, I was just made the person in charge, so I'm now the lead partnership specialist for the entire county.
Yeah.
And we're bringing on additional individuals, of course. We should be getting another, probably three or four partnership specialists in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, because this is very fundamental to our democracy, so I, I hope we do it right.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you for your report.
Sure. And if you would like, at some point, I know at the beginning, I did a very informal presentation for your board, because we still hadn't had everything in place. We're still rolling things out, of course, but we didn't have a lot of it in place. If you would like an actual formal presentation for your community, we'd be more than happy to come back and do that for you.
I only have one question.
Sure.
Are they going to call the 2020 census the doomsday book?
Let's hope not. Let's hope that we don't call it that.
The, the first census in, in England was called the doomsday book, that's why.
Oh, was it? Okay, all right. I thought I heard about that. I did, I did hear about that, and that it's going on in England. Hopefully, ours won't be, hopefully, ours will be a lot less scary. And again, that's why we're here. We're here to help and inform and educate and engage. And we will do our very best to do that for your community, as well as all the surrounding communities. Like I said, most of them have already set up the complete count committees, it's just a matter of doing the next push forward, which is just disseminating information. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. If there's no other questions?
Thank you, and the appropriate motion, if you agree, would be to move Council Bill R-2019-35.
So, moved.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition? Hearing none. It is approved unanimously, and we move to item number two. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you.
We're going to have a discussion about our development code, and I will open the public hearing when the time is ripe.
Okay, item number two, public hearing for first reading and a second reading for the Development Code Amendment, number P-19-095. This is a city-initiated amendment to change essentially one small portion of the Development Code relating to alcohol use and service in sit-down restaurants. Currently, the code requires that any sit-down restaurant required to have table service with alcohol service, but it also has to have 2,000 square feet. The request is to remove that 2,000-square-foot requirement. In, in doing the research on how this came about, with Council, Commissioner Nichols from the Planning Commission kind of remembers going back that far, that when this was, he was on the council when it started, he said, "The, the goal was to raise the bar of entry for a restaurant to get in that." But we've looked at that, and the bar of entry is, is still relatively high, they have to pass alcohol control. We do limit everything to beer and wine, and we really can't see a, a reason to have that 2,000-square-foot requirement. A smaller restaurant will still have the same controls, the same requirements as, as a larger one was. And once again, the only change on this is to remove the square footage requirement. There will be no other change to the alcohol service requirement.
So, I have a couple of comments. This is, this is kind of related to the petition from the Ethiopian restaurant.
This is directly related to that petition.
I'm sure some of you got the same letter as I did. I'm assuming we all got it. And basically, they were imploring us that as part of the culture, part of the food and the experience and all that kind of stuff, they wanted to be able to serve, and it was just beer and wine, too, it wasn't anything.
No, it's a very specific honey, honey-based...
But, but it's not a...
Adult beverage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a cultural thing, and so I, I'm, I'm very supportive of that. I think they've done pretty well here as a, as a restaurant, and, and to continue to invite those types of businesses and keep our business flourishing, I think it's one of those things that we need to consider, so. I know we have to...
We're...
We have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, so I wasn't going to make the motion, but I will when we're ready for that.
Okay, any other questions of staff? If not, then I'll open the public hearing. The public chooses not to speak, then I'll close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move it.
You're moving a first reading and setting the second reading for October 8th, correct? And seconding that? Okay. Any further discussion of that? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, then that is approved unanimously. We'll see it again on October 8th.
Thank you.
And the consent, consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Okay, there's a motion, support? There's support, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously. New business item 11, Council Bill R-2019-37, adopting our five-year capital improvement plan for Measure I.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, pretty much every year, this time, I will come to, to show you the, what we have planned for the next five years for Measure I CIP. But since we do it anyway, in addition to Measure I, we also have SB 1 money that we can use for pavement rehabilitation, so I'm pretty much going to show you what we plan for the next five years, particularly pay attention to this current fiscal year, which is fiscal year 1920, which is the one in, in, in orange. So, I'm gonna start with, at the north end of town, we have widening of the Mountain View and I-10 freeway off-ramp, it's under construction. The contractor pretty much finished paving the widening part, and right now, they are in the process of putting down the rock for hardscape. And then, after that is completed, they will be waiting for the, the traffic signal pole. It's taking, have, have a long lead time, so that, so that will be the last item for the I-10 and, and Mountain View off-ramp, on eastbound and westbound off-ramp. The funding for this project is $1 million from Caltrans, grant that they gave to us, and additional $200,000, it comes from the Traffic Medication Fund. Tonight, you just approved, yes, sir?
Before you move forward on that, so when you talk about the hardscape, that'll be on the hillside.
Correct.
That'll be easier to maintain than what we had before?
Yes, what happened is, then this time, we, we put in the fabric down first.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we put the rock down. So, on the north side, both the eastbound...
Yeah.
Both the westbound off-ramp and the eastbound on-ramp, westbound on-ramp will have the new rocks and the fabric on. But on the eastbound off-ramp, because we widened the road, the slope is steeper, we're gonna put in the rock in concrete.
Okay, good, good.
On the lower part.
Good, good.
The top part stayed the same. We do not do anything on the eastbound on-ramp, so that stayed the same. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna put some more rock on top to make it look fresher and nicer.
Okay.
But we're not gonna take it out and put the fabric down, so we'll, we'll continue to do maintenance on pulling weeds and pick up trash.
Okay.
I have a general question along those lines. Do we use Roundup currently in our control?
Yes, we did. We, we, they spray the, that first before we put the fabric down. But you know, that's only good for so many years and they come back up.
Yeah, well, the weeds go on top of the fabric and sprout under the rocks.
Yes.
So, there's no way to stop it.
Yes. So, right now, the contract that we have with the company that do the abatement, the adopted highway, they have a contract to pull, to remove the weeds. And then, Councilman Papescu, on the north side, I'm thinking about asking IVDA to help pay for the maintenance of the off-ramp. Because the south side is, is part of Loma Linda, the north side is east half is the City of Redlands, the west half is the City of San Bernardino, but both of them don't want to do anything, so we're doing it.
Not wanting to do something and being shamed into doing it are two different things.
Right now, it's only costs us about $500 a month for both on-ramp and off-ramp.
Oh.
Yes. So, Mike can handle it, so, thank you. Tonight, the city council just awarded a contract to do pavement rehabilitation on Shepperson from Mau to Benton, Popular Street, Bel Air, from Shepperson all the way to Barton Road, and, and Lamar and Taylor Street, you just awarded a contract for that. And the reason we waited till today is because we just have a contractor install the, the new water main down on Bel Air from Mau Street, I mean, from Shepperson to Barton Road, and also on Exeter. Bel Air from Mount Street, I mean, from Shepperson to Barton Road, and also on Exeter, from Prospect down to the end. Also, tonight, the city council just awarded a contract to replace the water main down on Richardson, Hillcrest, Crestview, on all this orange street. So we, after we replaced the pipeline, and then the contractor will come out and grind and pave the street, similar to what we did last year along this area. I'm sorry, this area right here. In addition to that, this year, we will be doing a pavement rehabilitation on Barton Road from, from campus all the way to Benton. And that's gonna be grinded and, and paved. The reason I'm waiting for later on this year is because university will be doing, installing a utility across Barton Road, and also cut the median to create a left-turn pocket into the new emergency room at the new hospital. So after they completed that task, we will come out and, and pave the street. We also plan to do a pavement rehabilitation on Anderson from Barton Road all the way to, to Stewart Street. We did this portion of Stewart Street all the way through the freeway a couple of years ago, so we gotta do the remaining of pavement rehabilitation on that. So that was also, we, if we have money left over from all this project, we're gonna do Campus Street from university to Barton Road. So that, that's on my, part of my list, and we'll go ahead and do the design. And after I prepare the construction cost estimate, if we can afford to do it, then we will do it.
While you're in that district, a couple of years ago, we had flooding at Loma Linda Academy.
Yes.
And we were talking about how to mitigate that issue. Is that resolved?
It's completed, sir. What we did, what we did is, at the end of Benton Street, this is Benton, right here.
Yeah.
Before the waters come down and, and go into the open channel here, at the, at the end of Benton, and come along here, and come out at the Van Louven, and spill over. So what we did is, we extended the storm drain system, go underneath the railroad track.
Aren't you, aren't you on the wrong side of town? You need to go farther north.
Where am I, Barton? Right here, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, and in the Barton, we go across the railroad track and dump it to this open channel right here. So by doing so, it's reduced the, the, the storm drain flow that used to come along here and dump out here. So that, that was completed a couple of years ago.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we're planning to do the one in brown. We see that the remaining of Barton Road, this, this subdivision, this track over here. And again, this track, what we plan to do is replace the existing water main, and then we grind pave the street. And that will be there. And also, up on Lawton, we plan to replace the existing six-inch pipe with eight-inch pipe. And then after we completed that, we grind overlay the street.
And that pipe is actively leaking right as we speak.
So that's why it's on the list. So we'll get fixed and, and get on the list. So, a, a, and this subdivision, and the one in blue is for twenty-one, twenty-two. So for the later year, that will be changed as, 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 as every year, I, I plan to do more. And if we have more money, we do more street. So, so I requested the city council approve the, the resolution for the, our five-year CIP, so I can submit it to SBCTA. Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve Council Bill R dash two thousand nineteen dash thirty-seven, adopting our capital improvement plan for Measure I?
Second.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously. Item number twelve, League of, League of California Cities Twenty Twenty Annual Conference Resolutions Packet.
Yes, sir. This year, I'll be attending the Council of the League of California Cities. They have two.
They have two resolution that, that, that like the member to, to review and approve. I'm just gonna summarize it. The resolution number one is for the California Public Utility Commission, or CalPUC, to expand its Rule Twenty A program for undergrounding the overhead utility to include the project in the high-fi hazardous zone. Right now, as part of your electric bill, you, you pay part of it for, for Rule Twenty A to underground the, the wire in the urban area. For example, we use that funding to underground the wire on, on Redlands Boulevard, along Redlands Boulevard. So now, they want to request that, in addition to the urban area, we include it in the high-fi hazard area. That's the resolution number one. The resolution number two is to call upon the state and federal government of the United States and Mexico to address the water quality issues resulting from transboundary flow from Mexico-Tijuana River into the United States. And we found out that, yes, the water does flow uphill at that location. I, I don't know why, why it's part of the league.
I think we should investigate the source of anti-gravity. Could be useful.
So what's interesting about that, is I, I was at a presentation about a year or two ago, where Border Patrol came and did a presentation to some, some folks. And this guy was Vice President of their association. And he was talking about how there is hazardous material that is, that is running into the United States from Mexico. Yet, in California, there have been multiple tours by Assemblymen, state senators, the governor's office, but they refuse to acknowledge that and talk about it. And they have a growing list of Border Patrol agents that are coming down with sicknesses and diseases and things like that related to this. In fact, even described about some areas where their boots melt because of the crap that's flowing into this country. But of course, because of the political climate, it's impossible for us to call them out on those things. So it's really interesting, and I think part of that, part of that's.
Is it causing global warming?
Don't know about that. But anyway.
If it were.
I'll sidestep that question. But it was really, very, very interesting. And this particular Border Patrol agent is married to a Mexican national. And he was very clear, this is not about politics, not about one side or the other, but there are definitely things that are going on that we refuse to acknowledge because of the political sensitivities of, of people. So, anyway, interesting.
So what are the implications of these two resolutions to the city of Loma Linda?
Nothing. But, but this is the, the national annual, annual state league meeting, yeah, league, league.
So this, this is being pushed by San Diego County, basically?
I think this is being pushed by the cities to use the league as a platform to progress the issue.
The implication being that if, if we help them out on this, they'll help us out when there's an issue that only affects us.
And can explain one more thing. How this work is, both Councilman Duper and I have been in this meeting. We have a lot of people sitting there, and the, and the voting members sit at the front. And yes, there'd be a couple of people spoke against or for the, the resolution. And at the end, the majority voted yes, and we're done. Sir, come on.
So you're saying what we decide tonight doesn't make any difference?
No, we can tell, we can tell George to vote no, but then I'll counteract it because it's the league president of the city, and I'll go yes.
And we don't control your votes since yours. Since yours.
Well, I will go, I will leave early because the, the, the voting is, like, at last, last day, and like, three in the afternoon is.
So our instruction to you would be, if you happen to still be there?
Yes, my direction to the council is to, for me to vote for the resolution.
My impression is they don't put contentious resolutions on the agenda.
Yes, and, and here's a little political commentary. I'm, I'm actually kind of happy to be done with my tenure. Because much like other groups that have kind of lost their, their ability to do things, I think the league is quickly going that direction. It doesn't really matter because Sacramento's gonna do what Sacramento wants to do, and the league has kind of lost some power.
And furthermore, the league appears to my taste to be dominated by Northern California left-wing politics.
Doesn't sound like it from this. This is Southern California.
Well, that's why I support it. Because it's something that I think, I think, you know, if, if a foreign nation is shoving its toxic waste into one of our counties, I support their desire to stop it. And I, and I really resent the state's position of tolerating it in the interest of political maneuvering.
That's what hap, is happening, yeah. The, the, are there financial implications? This is a politi, this is a political motion of support for the league. There's no financial implications.
To support those counties and cities, I think they have financial implications.
Well, this is the first time I've heard that water flows up from San Diego. That's, that's news to me. My, the, the physics class I took evidently didn't, didn't take this into consideration.
I don't know what's on here.
There's, but your, your four-letter word to describe it, traditionally, that's supposed to flow downhill.
Yep.
Okay, so is there, I don't think we have to do a vote. I think we can just instruct you, if you happen to be there, support these.
Vote your conscience.
Yeah, vote, vote however you like, but we tend to be in favor of it.
But if it starts costing us money, then it's because of Lenart's vote.
Yeah, and if you choose to go home before the vote, we're not going to complain. Okay, any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers? Oh, you want one? Go ahead.
We, we, it brought to my attention about Sacramento, and I just found out that for many, many years, the state has been violating an FAA rule that says that all taxes that are collected from the sale of aviation fuel needs to go back to the airports. And California is not doing that. They're keeping the money.
They do the same thing with transportation taxes.
Yeah. So it was brought to our attention at a meeting yesterday that it's gone to the point where the federal government says, that's it. If, if you don't pay up, we're gonna withhold the money that we're giving you. And there's different estimates as to the amount, but we're looking about.
Two hundred, two hundred fifty million dollars.
Yeah, two hundred fifty million dollars that the state of California is basically stealing from local airports. And of course, they're coming up with all those excuses, but there's a big fight going on in that. So anyway, that's a separate issue. Just a little bit of airport news. The Mayor Valdivia and I recently attended meetings with Mexican Airlines and folks from the US Embassy in Mexico City. And hopefully, in the next few months, we'll make some progress with that, although we've been talking about it for years. And furthermore, and this is more exciting, we'll see how this turns out, we've had some really good. I've been in, involved on the periphery at this point, because I haven't been available, but we've had some really good discussions with the Chinese consulate. And he is putting together a big symposium at our airport on October the eleventh. And where it gets a little even more exciting is that the consulate believes that the symposium is gonna be a big enough event that it will actually put pressure on the Trump administration to reach a deal on tariffs. So it'll be interesting.
Wishful thinking.
That in itself is reason to attend the symposium.
I agree.
But, so we're looking forward to it. There's things that we can do and achieve without any deal on tariffs. I think that even if the trade imbalance decreases, there's enough volume of cargo moving through our area that we can take a part of it.
Did you guys see the, it was probably buried, because people don't want to talk about this. Again, it shows that people aren't all that different. George Soros, right, who, George Soros is.
He praised Trump.
He praised Donald Trump for his actions related to China, because George Soros thinks that China is the number one threat to the country. And actually was giving him kudos for handle, how he's handling the tariffs. Although he did warn that it could backfire, he actually gave him praise. Now, there are two sides that absolutely, at least in all of our opinion, hate each other, and I thought that was very interesting.
Well.
We won't go that far.
There ain't a chance.
But that's okay. You have to deal with him for more years. It's okay.
I choose to believe I have integrity and morals. Not a chance. No. I'll be in Canada by that time.
Yeah, that's what they always say.
Because you guys don't want to go home. My, my, my boss was in a, at a retreat over the weekend in Palm Desert. Fancy golf hotel retreat. And he happened to run into Trump's campaign manager. Yeah, and they, and so he said, yeah, this group comes in, guys in suits, and you know, and obviously, he recognized it was something going on, whatever. Well, somehow, they bumped into each other near the pool, and the guy was more than happy to brag about who he was. You don't know who I am, and was telling him all this stuff. But it was, it was interesting to, to listen to. It, it's, it's all politics, you know, it's all BS. Some of the stuff that he was sharing, it's, it's all so far above our level of comprehension of what's going on behind the scenes and the games that they play. But he said it was really interesting to talk to the guy.
Well, I have.
If you say his name, I'll remember it. I don't. Yeah, Pascal, Pas, Arsk, yeah. Took a picture with him, so I know, I know it is, I know the conversation occurred.
He's predicting a Trump dynasty for decades to come.
Yeah, when you start talking, when you start talking dynasties, that's when I start getting upset. I think the Kennedys have played themselves out, and the Bushes. But I have a report of councilmen, since I am one. There was a fairly monumental decision that was made by a group of six people on an ad hoc committee considering the future of Omni-Trans. And that ad hoc committee was massively overrepresented by the very small community of Loma Linda. There were only six, and two of us were there. So we had one-third of the representation. But basically, the issue is that Omni-Trans, the bus company for the, for the valley areas, the public bus, has projected deficits as far as the eye can see, operating deficits, and even more massive capital deficits because of really odd electrification requirements going forward, completely unfunded mandates. So the decision that was arrived at is that Omni-Trans would get something like a two-point-eight percent increase in its funding from Sandbag, and would also be required to cut its services by eleven percent in order to meet the operating deficit and, and eliminate the deficit. And then Sandbag, the board, in, in response to that, supported that, but then took the additional position of voting to investigate the possibility of coalescing the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and Omni-Trans in one, in one organization. Just an investigation of it. It's, it's one of the agendas for some of the members of, of Sandbag and for Omni-Trans to do that and obtain majority support. And it, and it included, interestingly to me, a request from the High Desert Transportation, you know, Victor Valley Transportation Authority and, and others, to be included in that analysis. And in the past, whenever they were included in the analysis, they all went ballistic and refused to participate. Because they said, if Omni-Trans has problems, it's not our problem. But now, they all want to be part of the solution. So it'll be interesting to see what, what comes up. So it'll be interesting to see what what comes of it. But there are gonna be some changes in transit in in the valley. There's not enough money, there's declining ridership, and the feds are not sending enough money. The state is putting, the feds and the state are putting really unrealistic requirements on it for electrification, et cetera, and the whole thing is going to implode if if nothing changes. Did I?
No, I don't, I don't disagree with most of that. I was, the other half of the third was on the committee. You know, through this whole process, the issue that I have been most troubled by, and I've been fairly open about it with OmniTrans. I'm not on the SBCTA board, obviously. But the the co-mingling of the two boards has created massive political issues and conflict of interest issues. And the challenge we have with the OmniTrans board is there are particularly two people that see themselves primarily as SBCTA advocates. And then there are a number of others. And then there's the massive middle that are trying to figure out what the heck is going on. But 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 the conflict of interest issues between SBCTA and OmniTrans are very distressing and categorically unethical, in my view. But I will say, and I've talked with your good friend Ray about it, he sees it differently, but he sees it to his benefit, too. So it it's it's a mess. It is a a political and functional mess right now with with people with conflict of interests on both boards. And I'm I'm frankly stunned and disappointed that it continues.
And the the counterpoint to the accusation of conflict of interest is that the responsibility for transit falls upon SBCTA. And SBCTA has chosen in the past to delegate that, its own responsibility, to OmniTrans. And the the counterpoint to what you're saying is that it can't be a conflict of interest if it's SBCTA's responsibility in the first place. But that's. We don't need to get too far into the weeds.
I obviously have counterpoints to your counterpoint.
Yeah, and I I was just saying that is the counterpoint, I'm not, I'm not endorsing it.
Ray and I have had this conversation.
Well, the 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 eleven percent cut will be effective roughly September of next year.
Well, here here's the irony of the whole.
But the study will go up until it's done.
It's both boards voted to appoint an ad hoc committee with representation from each board, which is what happened. That group met multiple times, came up with recommendations, and now, and I can name them, but I won't, but there are particularly two SBCTA board members, probably three, that have their own plan. And and it it is, it is a categorical political mess. And bordering on corruption, in my, in my view, but hey, you know. I'm I'm one voting member on OmniTrans. So it's a mess.
I I would just add that, having recently been in Europe, I was impressed in how, well, having recently just been in Europe, I was impressed on how full their buses are. And I look at our buses, and I'm thinking, how can someone of any good conscience pay to run an empty bus? Every day, I see lanes that causes so much traffic from those SPX buses. They're empty, and all they do is cause traffic. It's just, the mind boggles the mind, and the problem is, our society is designed, everybody wants to be independent, they wanna drive in a car, and we're not gonna be able to change that. And clearly, people are riding less and less buses, and it's reflected in the numbers. And we, as taxpayers, are paying for it, so I welcome any effort that streamlines the process, period.
And and I don't disagree with you, that's an issue. There there's a, you know, to disimpact that a bit, those of us in Loma Linda are seeing buses at the end of a line. And that makes a difference, that makes a significant difference, that's point one. The trends that you cite are accurate. Those are also national trends. Those are not unique to San Bernardino County or Inland Empire at all. There are multiple plans to look at other options besides big buses to get into microtransit, as an example. So there's a lot that's going on. But, you know, it it's basically who's the dog, who's the tail, and who's gonna wag either the tail or the dog. And and so this becomes, there there are practical and financial implications, no question about those, and those have to be addressed, and I I agree with you totally, Ovi. But the process that we have in place right now is ineffective and and very poor. It it's, it's just, somebody that's dealt in organizations for years, it's appalling to me. But it is what it is.
Okay, any reports of officers? Then city council is adjourned, and we will be adjourning to our next October eighth at six o'clock for our closed session. Follow-up to today's closed session. Okay, the housing authority agenda, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none. The consent calendar is there. Do you like it? There's a motion. There's a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously. Any chair and member reports? Any reports of officers? Hearing none, that is adjourned. Now we go to our successor agency, any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? None. Consent calendar? Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, and we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. We will see you on October eighth, or not.